I'm calling to order the Monday, April 29th, meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapters 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 1-408-650-3123 with access code 235235861. Or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone else in the audience recording? Seeing none, can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone signed up for public comment?
There's no public comment sign-up, so we're going to start with presentations and hearings. First, there's the presentation of recognition by the Auburn Board of Selectmen and the State Delegation for the Police Department personnel who participated in the search and safe return of the missing Auburn 12-year-old child in January 2024.
Madam Chair, I'd like to invite up the Police Chief, who is going to open up this recognition.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we're here to recognize the incredible teamwork that brought a 12-year-old home safely after being exposed to the cold in January weather for an unknown period of time. On January 31st, 2024, at about 10:30 p.m., a mother called the APD to tell us that her child left home on foot sometime after 8:30 p.m., and no one knew where they were. The temperature was about 30 degrees, and the child was not believed to be wearing a winter jacket, only a hooded sweatshirt. Officers from both the evening shift and the midnight shifts diligently searched the area, addresses of friends, and utilized social media to attempt to find where the child had gone. All the usual hangouts yielded negative contact. While officers searched, K-9 Beza was deployed and began to track, subsequently following the child's almost two-mile path. With Beza tracking, officers were able to narrow down their search field, subsequently leading to the child being located by officers just before 1:00 a.m. The child was evaluated by Auburn Fire Department personnel and transported to the hospital as a precaution before being safely returned home. This call spanned two shifts and showed an unbelievable amount of coordination. Tonight, we proudly recognize the following. Dispatching Communications Personnel, Dispatcher Alex Cortez, and he's represented tonight by his mother, Andrea. Dispatcher Cortez is deployed in the Middle East with the Air Force. Carrie Girardin, Madison Hamel, Brianna Parker, and Luke Snee out of the Patrol Division. And the Detective Bureau Sergeant Michael Tarkini, Detective Tyler Bress, Officer Brandon Geldart, Officer Randy Harley, Officer Matthew Laskas, Officer Dave Lundgren with his K-9 Beza, Officer John McLaughlin, and Officer Jordan Ryan. I don't have a chance often enough to tell publicly how proud I am of the Police Department and the Fire Department personnel for that matter. I say, I truly believe we have the best public safety services in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and maybe further. So with that, I present you the officers that are here with their family members tonight.
Thank you. The Select Board has a proclamation for the officers, and then followed by the State Delegation. For your unwavering dedication, tireless efforts, and exemplary professionalism in the search and safe return of a missing 12-year-old child, your commitment to ensuring the safety and the well-being of our community is truly commendable. Your quick response, thorough investigation, and compassionate approach during this challenging time have not gone unnoticed. Do you want to go ahead?
So I have citations from the State Senate for all the officers, and I'm just going to read one because they will all say the same after this. So it says, "State Senate official citation, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to," then it will read to the officer or the individual, "in recognition of your heroic actions on late January 31st, 2024, which resulted in finding a missing 12-year-old, and with immense appreciation for your dedication to the well-being and safety of the public. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success." That the citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to in a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk, and it's signed by the Senate President, Karen Spilka, and myself, and again to all the officers that present these to you. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you. I'm Representative Paul Frost. I'm also an Auburn resident, so I know what great dedication and hard work the entire Auburn PD does for our community, and we're thankful to have you. It's an honor to be here to recognize the individuals, as well as the K-9 officer who helped find that missing child, and we're grateful for everything that you did, and we're here to join in in recognizing your efforts and to promote your efforts to the community, because I think that's also important. I thank the Selectmen for doing that. I also have citations from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives, Officer Sincere, congratulations to the members of the Auburn Police Department who are being honored today, including Officer David Lundgren and K-9 Beza of the Auburn Police Department. In recognition of your heroic efforts in the rescue of a missing, in recognition of your heroic efforts in the rescue of a missing child on the night of January 31st, 2024, and your dedication to public safety in the Auburn community, the entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses its hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 29th day of April in the year 2024, it is offered by the, signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, and offered by me, your very proud State Representative, Paul Frost. Congratulations, and thank you for all you do.
We're going to do them in alphabetical order. Oh, sorry. Are there any board members that have any comments?
Okay. So I just wanted to briefly tell a story on how you guys got here. So I'm a pretty avid social media watcher, but I even missed the post. So I'm also a Worcester Reivers, a season ticket holder, as is Mr. Chamberlain, Mr. Chambers, and I was sitting there waiting for the game to start, and next thing I know, out comes, you know, Officer Beza. And I was like, wait a minute, that's, I know, I know that dog, and I hear the story. And I was like, wait a minute, why didn't I hear about this? So I jumped on Facebook, because that's the first place I always go, and I found the post in January that discussed the heroic action that took place. And I immediately sent an email to the Town Manager, and I said, being a new Select Board member, I wasn't sure, is there a way for us to honor those staff members that participated? Because being a 19-year employee, municipal employee of another municipality, I've always believed that any time an employee goes above and beyond, there should be formal recognition from the City Council, the mayor, the Select Board in our case. And the Town Manager said, absolutely, we can do a proclamation. Provided me their names, and based on the Facebook post, I had provided Officer Lundgren and Officer K-9 Beza. And it came up before the Board. I told the story. The Board voted 5-0 to provide the recognition, and the next day, the Town Manager relayed it to the Chief. And I'm very grateful for the Chief, who immediately wrote back and said, you know what, there's more to this story. There's all of these other officers and dispatchers. It was a joint team effort, and really, if the Select Board is going to provide that recognition, it really needs to go to my entire team. And immediately, the Town Manager said, Todd, are you okay with this? And I said, of course I'm okay with it. When's our next meeting? Let's amend the vote. Let's make sure we recognize every single individual who was involved on both the Police Department side as well as the dispatch side. And, you know, I was grateful for the Board that put this forward, and I just want to, on behalf of the residents for the Town of Auburn, I want to, you know, thank you for going, not just doing your day-to-day job, you know, very appreciative of that, but really for going above and beyond the call of duty, day in and day out for the residents of Auburn. And I agree, Chief, I think our department is second to none in Massachusetts. So I just wanted to quickly say thank you for all you do, and really thank you to your families for letting you do what you do. You know, they're just as important as you. I know that there's many, you know, sleepless hours that they have when you guys are out there, you know, defending, protecting and serving the community, and I just want to, especially that we have them in the room, to thank them as well. Thank you.
I just want to say, thank you, Todd. I just wanted to say how grateful we are to the Auburn Police Department, and we're very lucky that we have a police department that's so dedicated and works so hard. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Todd told the story very well. We do appreciate everything that you guys do, day in, day out, and it's not often we get a chance to actually recognize you, but know that we are grateful for everything you do every day. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to offer my thanks. We appreciate everything you guys do. We are going to do the names in alphabetical order, so you can stop at both spots. I'm going to start with Tyler Bress. No, that's good. Oh, I'm okay. Yeah, I'll go like this. Thank you.
We'll take the pictures after.
Yeah. We're going to try to do a group photo afterwards. We're going to try.
Next, we have Alexander Cortez. And a special thanks to Mr. Cortez for all of his service overseas. One of my personal favorites on the force, Officer Bryn Geldart. Full disclaimer, he's my neighbor. Full disclaimer, if I butcher names, I apologize in advance. Carrie Girardin.
You can read it. Read it.
And then, K-9 Officer Lundgren.
Do you want me to look for it? This is Beza. Yeah.
I wanted to bring milk bones, but I was like, I don't want to get in trouble. I know he's a working dog.
Luke Snee. Michael Tarkini Jr. Louis is not here. We still want to recognize him, Randy Harley.
Well, ask the Chief to come up and get that.
Additional, Chief, stay right there, Chief. Chief, Chief, come back up. The State Senate has presented one to the entire department as well.
Someone's going to have to kneel.
(Inaudible).
Thanks for pursuing that, Todd, too. Very good. I love how they brought.
Always the mean guy.
I'm assuming those are all families, too.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to. Yeah, we're going to make a motion right now.
We're going to move up.
Yeah, the annual Town Manager Annual Evaluation.
You want to move it up?
Yeah.
They're not leaving yet.
No, that's good. Do you want to make a five-minute recess?
Yeah. Is there a motion?
Yeah, can I make a motion for a five-minute recess?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Chair is a yes. Okay, so we're returning after our five-minute break.
Make a motion that we move up Agenda Items, Select Board General Items, Town Manager Evaluation, 7A.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. So in our packets, we have the Town Manager Performance Evaluation. We tallied up all the scores, and Mr. Kastenovich scored a 55 out of 60. Do board members have any comments?
Apparently, I always go first. Yeah, I mean, I just want to say that I think, as I put in my comments, I think you far exceeded, certainly my expectations, and I think the expectations of others with your performance. You've shown an openness to increasing transparency, communicating with residents, communicating with the Board. You know, it's a score of one to three, and I gave you lots of threes, and that's not to say that there's not room for improvement, because I think there's always room for improvement in all, in every profession and everything we do. But I think, you know, on a one to three, where three was, you know, exceeding job performance, I'm proud to say that you've done that across the Board, in my own personal opinion, with respect to at least your interactions with myself, your interactions that I've seen with other boards and commissions, your interactions with staff, the leadership you've provided with respect to embracing new technologies, revamping the website, online permitting. You know, it's a lot of great stuff that's happening in the town because of your leadership, and I just want to thank you for that.
Well, congratulations. I think I gave you all three threes and a two, just I think we still need to work on some community commercial development and get some restaurants into town. That's kind of a new one. But, you know, I've known you for over 20 years and worked with you for over 20 years, and I've always been impressed with your professionalism and your knowledge on what is happening. You never come unprepared, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
So again, I think you've done an excellent job thus far. I do have higher expectations. I don't like necessarily the rating system, but I don't find much fault with anything. I think you've been moving things in the right direction. I know some things take a little bit longer than all of us would like, but I would like to say you've done an excellent job this year. Thank you.
I would also like to echo my board members' comments. I think you've done an excellent job this year.
Thank you to all of your comments. It's much appreciated. I'd like to thank you for the evaluation of my performance over the past year, which, by the way, Mark, my first full year as serving as Town Manager. I appreciate the support I have received from all of you, and we will continue to work together in addressing the best interest of our entire community of Auburn. I appreciate your feedback that you have provided to me during this evaluation, as well as throughout the year. I could tell you it's been an honor to serve as Town Manager and to work for a dedicated Board who are passionate about the town. I'm very fortunate to work with all of our Town employees on a daily basis and throughout the year. That really focuses on enhancing the quality of life for our Auburn residents and to provide the best services that we can to all the taxpayers of Auburn. I am proud of the many accomplishments achieved during the past year, as I highlighted in my self-evaluation report to you back in February. I can honestly say any accomplishments that I have made are a result of a collaboration of efforts of our professional management team and our division heads and our Town employees. I'd like to thank and recognize our executive management team. I am grateful for all of their contributions and the support that helps me advance my goals and my agenda to make Auburn more desirable. So I'd like to thank Dori Vecchio, thank you, Dori, our Assistant Town Manager and Human Resource Director. She gives me so much support and guidance on a daily basis. I'd like to thank Fire Chief Steve Coleman, he's not here with us tonight, our Police Chief Todd Lemon, Karen Harneys, our CFO and Town Accountant, Joanna Paquin, our DPW Director, Darlene Coyle, Director of Development and Inspeccional Services, and Mike Marino, IT Director. And many thanks to Sharon Kwiatowski, Sue Struzina, and Danielle Chamberlain-Roberts for the support they provide to me relative to the day-to-day activities, not only in the Town Manager's office, but in support of you, the Board of Selectmen. And finally, to our residents in Auburn, thank you for staying engaged in local government. Your volunteerism and your support you provide to this outstanding community, I look forward to working with each and every one of you in the coming years. Once again, thank you to all, and it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move back to 5A. It's the departmental report by the Finance Department. If you guys would like to come up or at the podium, whatever is best for you.
So Madam Chair, if I may, this really is the start of a, something that the Board wanted. The Board voted to hear from our department heads to find out what's going on within our local government, to have a better understanding as to some of the challenges you face on a day-to-day basis and what we can expect going into the future. I'm proud to say that we have the Finance Department kicking off the first presentation, and DPW will present following Karen in her department. And we're going to do this on a quarterly basis. So the next series would be in January. We typically do it on the fifth week of the month that contains five Mondays. I know we may be on a summer schedule. We can probably sync that into a normal meeting if the Board so desires, but we'll make that decision as we get closer to that time. So with that, I'll turn it over to Karen and Jill for presentation.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm Karen Harneys, the CFO and Town Accountant, and I am here with Gillian Taylor, the Assistant Town Accountant, and we're very happy to be invited to present the Finance Report this evening. Also have other members of the Finance Team here, Seth Woolard, the Assessor, Lisa Targon Ski, the Assistant Assessor, Catherine Spanos, the Assistant Treasurer Collector, and Mary Ann Murphy, the Treasurer Collector. So Slide number two is the organizational chart for the Department of Finance. It starts with the CFO, Town Accountant, and the two department heads, the Chief Assessor, Treasurer Collector. Then there are three assistants, one for each division, and then we have four full-time clerks and two part-time clerks. The introduction. I'm just going to give an overview of the Finance Department's critical functions. The evaluation of town properties and abatement processing, issuing tax bills and collection of monies, reviewing and payment of town invoices, processing of town payroll, and budget formulation and monitoring. The Finance Divisions have had several challenging times due to staff shortages and staffing changes within the departments. Now, the three Finance Divisions have established checks and balances and segregation of duties. And two examples would be with the reconciliation of cash and taxes receivable between the Accounting Department and the Treasurer Collector, and the Treasurer Collector recording receipts that are verified and posted by the accounting. Now, there is, succession planning is key to continuity within each department. Training and learning are encouraged, including achieving certification status. So, slide number two is the organizational chart for the Department of Finance. It starts with the CFO, Town Accountant, and the two department heads, the Chief Assessor, Treasurer Collector. Then there are three assistants, one for each division, and then we have four full-time clerks and two part-time clerks. The introduction. I'm just gonna give an overview of the Finance Department's critical functions. The evaluation of town properties and abatement processing, issuing tax bills and collection of monies, reviewing and payment of town invoices, processing of town payroll, and budget formulation and monitoring. The Finance Divisions have had several challenging times due to staff shortages and staffing changes within the departments. Now, the three Finance Divisions have established checks and balances and segregation of duties, and two examples would be with the reconciliation of cash and taxes receivable between the Accounting Department and the Treasurer Collector, and the Treasurer Collector recording receipts that are verified and posted by the accounting. Now, there is succession planning is key to continuity within each department. Training and learning are encouraged, including achieving certification status. Now, the audit, our audit firm, Scanlon Associates LLC, has issued an unqualified opinion for the town's FY23 audit report. Now, this report and opinion indicate that the auditors are satisfied with the town's financial reporting, and the auditor believes the town's operations comply with governance principles and applicable laws. There were no single audit findings on any of our federal programs, and the bond rating for the town with Standard and Poor's is a double A+, which means that the town is financially strong and has a strong likelihood of repaying its debts, making the chance of default very low. I'm gonna turn it over to Gillian Taylor, who will go through the Accounting Division.
Hello. Um, so for the Accounting Division, we have Karen Harneis, who is our CFO, Town Accountant, and she is a Certified Public Accountant and Certified Governmental Accountant. She is currently working toward the Mass Certified Public Procurement Officer designation. For myself, Gillian Taylor, Assistant Town Accountant, and I am pursuing to be a Certified Governmental Accountant. And then our two full-time employees who work part-time, Patricia Messina and Loriann Copeland are, like I said, part-time in accounting and then part-time in other departments as well. Some of the accounting functions that we are going to highlight, uh, one of them is maintains the general ledger, processes journal entries, and budget adjustments. For payroll, we process weekly payroll and perform other payroll functions, including reconciling and issuing W-2s. We follow the circular E guidelines and annually update the tax tables. Maintaining employee records within the payroll system is another key part of our payroll process, and that includes new employee setup and employee accruals in accordance with union contracts and town personnel policies. Excuse me. Another key function of our Accounting Department is accounts payable. We have new vendor setups, reviewing and entering invoices, and process the weekly warrants, purchasing order, per, sorry, excuse me, purchase order creation and subsequent liquidations, and also verifying and issuing 1099 forms to vendors. Maintaining all special revenue revolving federal, state, capital, project, and trust and agency accounts. We record and monitor budget balances, and we review and post cash receipts, commitments, and abatements. Another big process that we do is processing police and fire detailed billing. For FY23, we had a total of 625 invoices, and currently to date for FY24, we have 406. We review purchase compliance with state and federal laws and maintain documents as, as the central depository of compliance records. The CFO, along with the Town Manager, is responsible for creating the yearly budget forecasts of revenues and expenditures. We reconcile cash and taxes with the Treasurer Collector, and we are also the custodian of all municipal contracts. There are a lot of reports that we have to process, and two of those main reports are the Schedule A, which is required by DOR as a report of revenue and expenditures by categories and a reconciliation of end-of-year fund balances. The other big one is our free cash balance sheet, which is submitted to obtain free cash certification by the Department of Revenue. Balance sheets are required for all fund types, and detailed fund balances are provided. We have been dabbling in some other projects, and one of our big ones right now is our implementation of the Employee Self-Service Module for Payroll, which will allow employees to electronically access their pay stubs and try, and really try to eliminate any paper stubs that we have. Our next division is the Treasury and Collections Division. Mary Ann Murphy is our Treasurer Collector, and she is a Certified Massachusetts Municipal Collector. Catherine Spanos is our Assistant Treasurer Collector, and she is a newly certified Massachusetts Municipal Treasurer and will be pursuing the Collector Certification. They have three Principal Clerks who are full-time. That is Eva Diaz, Carla Hammond, and Christina Tokas. Succession planning is in place so that the Assistant Treasurer Collector can move up to the Treasurer Collector position upon Mary Ann's retirement. A Principal Clerk is being trained in the Assistant Treasurer Collector duties. For FY23, the Treasurer Collector's Office has issued over 80,000 bills, including demands. So, for real estate, there was over 26,000 bills, personal property over 2,000, motor vehicle excises over 22,000, trash over 10,000, sewer over 10,000, and demands was over 7,000 as well. The total collections for each of those bills, um, from FY23 for the real estate is 45 million, real estate liens 318,000, personal property 1.7 million, motor vehicle excises 3.3 million, trash 1.3 million, sewer 2.9 million, and demands was over $100,000. Other receipts that the Treasurer Collector's Division collect are departmental receipts, which is any monies turned over from other departments, such as DDIS, turning over a building per, building permit fees, um, the town clerk with their marriage licenses, those kinds of things. Um, they also receive the state and federal seats for things like grants, and then our Bartholomew Investment Receipts. The investments that we have are certificates of deposit, treasury bonds, and then our Bartholomew Investments, which include other post-employment benefits, also known as OPEB, trust funds, and stabilization. Other Treasurer Collector functions are printing, reviewing, and mailing checks issued. So, for payroll checks for the town, we have issued over 10,000 stubs. School payroll checks issued were over 12,000, and then accounts payable checks issued was over 6,000. They also issue municipal lien certificates for properties to be sold or refinanced, and the town issued 450 certificates for the year fiscal '23. Other items that the Treasurer Collector's Office does is they file annual reports, including statement of indebtedness and treasurer's year-end cash report. They also reconcile taxes receivable and cash with accounting. The department is looking at user-friendly online payment systems. The features would include the ability for taxpayers to look up their bills, and it includes three email reminders of bill due dates and offers the option to pay bills more easily online.
So, the, the third division is the Assessing Division. Seth Woolard is the Chief Assessor, is a Massachusetts accredited assessor. Lisa Targonski, Assistant Assessor, is a Certified Assessment Administrator and has over 15 years' experience in assessing. And Cheryl Zalaskis, Principal Clerk, is the newest team member who was hired in January of 2024. Some of the Assessor primary functions. They create and commit billing. Motor vehicle excise six to seven commitments per year, real estate four per year, and personal property four per year. They have abatement, granting, and processing for real estate, personal property, and motor vehicle. Approximately 500 abatements to date have been processed for FY2024. Exemptions for seniors, veterans, blind are reviewed, processed, and individually calculated for the tax bills. All are submitted annually to the Department of Revenue for reimbursement to the town, and approximately 250 applications are reviewed per year. For small business exemptions, they mail, process, review, and enter for billing, approximately 65 for FY2024. Inspections are conducted for sales of properties, permits, and for cyclical requirements. For FY2023, 1,000 inspections were completed with a goal of 1,200 for 2024. Annually, the Assessor submits new growth to the Department of Revenue for certification. The Assessor presents at the Tax Classification Hearing at the Select Board Meeting and submits the task, tax recap for certification annually with all the necessary documentation. Other departmental duties include annual mailings that require tracking, reviewing, and recording of information, income and expenses for commercial industrial properties, approximately 450, forms of list that are used for personal property values, approximately 700 forms. And in chapter land, we have Chapter 61 Forestry, Chapter 61A Agricultural, and Chapter 61B Open Space Recreational, and has approximately 40 parcels in chapter land. And the three ABC forms are the filings from the charitable organizations in order to maintain exempt status. Mapping. The Assessing Division compiles all tax map changes, lot splits, new buildings, et cetera, and sends it to an outside vendor so that the mapping can be updated annually. They prepare supplemental billing for any completed or new construction, and their daily functions include entering new deeds, mailing out sale questionnaires to new owners, and entering building permits into their CAMA system. A couple of other items of note for the Assessing Division. The Assessor's Office is conducting its five-year revaluation with the Department of Revenue for FY2025. They are working with the DOR with vision for real estate revaluation and for the vendor real estate research for pro, personal property. If any abatements are not granted, and then they are appealed to the Appellate Tax Board, the Assessor is involved in defending the property values for the town. So, thank you for your attention to this presentation. Thank you for having us in this evening, and if there are any questions for any of our divisions, we'd be happy to address them.
Thank you so much. Do board members have any questions?
So, again, thank you for what you do. Um, I'm not as familiar with the, the finance side, um, of things, and I know the municipalities have a lot more. It sounds like a lot of manual processing. You said, um, that some things were coming more online. Is that like a, is there a long-term plan to get that over? Is it a short-term plan to, uh, transition things to, uh, less manual input, or am I just hearing that?
Was there something specific that was...
No, I think it was in general. You, you were talking about transferring over some stuff into online forums. I think we, some of the billing and, and such, uh, again, to me, I think a lot of what I hear, and I'm not familiar with it, is it a lot of manual process, I guess, is the first question.
There are some processes that are manual that we still want to work on to be more electronic. Say, like the purchase orders. We want to have the departments enter those and go through the approval process. And we had mentioned the ESS, which is Employee Self-Service. So, we're trying to get away from more paper into more of the electronic, where employees can go and look online. They could change their withholdings, but obviously everything is secure, you know, with proper permissions. And instead of sending out the check stubs, they'll be able to access them all online. So, we are definitely trying to bring any processes that aren't electronic more online and electronic-based.
And is there, like, roadblocks or, like, a timeline on that, or what? Do you already have a system in place, and you just need to move it over and it takes time? Is that...
Yeah, the Employee Self-Service is something that we've been working on, um, a little bit after I arrived here last February. And, um, we're on the fi, I would say, we're kind of on the final stages of that project. We've actually rolled it out to several of the departments. They're already putting their, their, their time in electronically, and, for example, the department heads will go to me, um, the, the assistants and the, and the clerks will go to that, the department head, like, they'll go to Seth or they'll go to Mary Ann. So, we're testing that out right now to make sure that's all the proper approvals in place for that. So, yes, it does take some time, but we'll be going from one project to the next, to the next, to try to get everything done as quickly as possible.
No, that's, I like to hear that, and I love that there's a plan in place, and hopefully a lot of that manual stuff can, can get off the plates, but obviously, there's checks and balances and everything, so it's not, like, set it and forget it. You still have to go in and do quite a bit of work, but thank you.
That's why we wanted to point out that we have the segregation of duties and the checks and balances, even though that we're one department within the divisions.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I just wanted to, echoing what Stephen just said, I like to see the idea of the checks and balances, especially when you're dealing with all the financial information. And the, um, the online, um, employee portal for the, um, for payroll is, I like seeing that, and perhaps we'll even save some money when we don't have to print those checks, and we'll still have to pay for the software, but maybe we'll see a little bit of a savings there, too. Right? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the, for the detailed presentation, sort of overlook of how the, how the, um, department operates. Um, it's, helps me kind of, you know, understand where, how everything's connected. Um, I'm, I'm, I was concerned when I first heard that there was such a strong emphasis on internal succession. Um, I'm, only because typically what happens, or what I've seen in my experience, is that there's a presumed, um, line of succession, and that somebody just moves into the job because they're the next one in line. And municipality best practices focus a lot. If you're gonna have a strong succession plan, part of that is focusing on training and making sure that people are adequately trained and prepared for those positions. And I'm very happy to see that you're not only having a strong focus on succession, but you're doing the planning, you're do, you know, the right way. You're ensuring that your staff are earning the certificates, are receiving the credentials, are, are actively participating in continuing education within the position. So, kudos on that, you know. I'm, I'm very happy to hear that, you know, you're just not, you know, paying lip service to succession, but you're doing it the right way. Um, and I'm, I'm very happy to, to hear about that. Um, I did have, um, one of the, one of the big things, and I know it's a buzzword that people throw out, is transparency and accountability, but, um, as a town manager, can, can attest, this is sort of, you know, one of my things that I'd like to see more of, um, in terms of providing information publicly accessible via the website as much as possible, so that those residents, town meeting members, board members who want to find the data can find it, uh, easily, uh, without having to bug you and your staff with endless emails saying, "What is this?" or "What is this?" And, and to that end, you know, the budget book is, is very good. Um, the, the cherry sheets are very good. But one of the, the things that I'm still racking my head on is the town, and it's not just the town of Auburn, all towns have a lot of what are called special revenue accounts and special revenue funds, and they could be grants, they could be, um, you know, certain allocations. Some are trusts that are donated to the town, um, and those are typically, um, spent without the need for allocation or appropriation. So, um, you know, staff has the ability to spend those monies on programming without having to go to an oversight board, just as a select board or town meeting, um, the Finance Committee, et cetera. And there's no place that I could find that has the, sort of, the full list of every, uh, special revenue account within the town, and that actually provides a breakdown of how it is spent each year. Um, I've, I've, I've been able, you know, by going through the lists, uh, the website, finding some that have the beginning balance and the ending balance, but nothing that says how it's spent. Um, I found, uh, an online breakdown for three of the accounts, but I'm, I know there's a lot more than three. So, I'm hoping that over the next year, um, that, uh, your department can perhaps work with the IT Department and the Town Manager to, um, to, to make that, you know, more accessible and maybe even include it in sort of the annual town meeting, um, as just an information piece, not something that town meeting gets to vote on or, or the Finance Committee gets to vote on, but just the recognition that the town is spending a lot more money to provide the vital services to our residents that our residents are demanding than just the annual budget. And I think that it's important for our residents to understand the amount of money that is spent on their behalf to run these operations. And I also think it's important that, that that information is communicated so that there's also, on the flip side, the accountability, that once we can see how it is spent, if there are concerns by the residents or the board or the town meeting members, that they can raise that to the department heads. Um, so I just, that, that's sort of one gray area, um, of the finance system that unfortunately remains gray, um, that I'd like to sort of see flushed out a little bit more and made more accessible. Um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Sure. Do you mind if I respond to that a little?
Uh, a few years ago, we did have a window that gave our residents an opportunity to do exactly what you are, are expressing. Um, unfortunately, it becomes a little difficult because you gotta know the sequencing of the org and the object in order to gain that information. Uh, and it actually became victim to when we cut 1.3 million dollars during COVID, and we're experiencing some, some difficult times at a time when the software maintenance was increasing on an annual basis. That's an area that we could revisit and focus on, but once again, it would take an annual commitment to support that level of, of accessibility, so to speak, uh, to allow our residents, uh, into that level of detail that, that they may be seeking. So, that's something we'll take a look at. We can report back to the board.
Thank you. Thank you, Blake. Oh, go ahead.
Just one last thing. I actually do have spreadsheet that I created- I actually do have spreadsheets that I created for each of the funds, for all the special revenue, all the capital projects that have all that information, beginning balance, the revenue, the expenses, the ending balance. And I do believe that within the town report, too, has like the ending balances. So, it is something that I can make available. We usually do it once a year. Would that be sufficient at least to provide?
I remember that portal. I loved that portal when I first moved here. I looked and used that portal when I got on town meeting to sort of understand because some of the historic information was still there. You know, I want to be very cognizant of the amount of money we're spending on those types of things and sort of balance that. But even anything such as a PDF that is available for an easy click and download and look at, doesn't have to be the bells and whistles of the portals that you see that, you know, larger municipalities have. It's just making that information available for people that want to find it, that want to see it, to go click it without having to send public records requests or endless amounts of emails. So, even a PDF of a spreadsheet once a year, just to say, hey, here's this fund, you know, here's how the money was spent.
Karen, I'm just thinking we could create a PDF out of MUNIS that contains that level of detail for the entire general ledger. It is an enormous file. We create that for our auditors, but, you know, it may be challenging to reserve that type of space out on our server. That's something we can take a look into, but that's something we may be able to do immediately, but we'll look into that.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Our next departmental item is the department report from DPW.
Turn on the slideshow. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present the DPW, an update as well as overall, an overview of the department. So, tonight here with me, I have Nick Schwartz, Assistant DPW Director. Kristin Pappas is in charge of Recreation. Kenny Fairbanks, Parks, Cemetery, Recreation, and Highway Superintendent. Katie Ryan is the Clubhouse Manager, and Pete Corio is the Golf Course Superintendent. So, for those of you that may not know, my name is Joanna Paquin. I'm the DPW Director. The Department of Public Works is made up of several divisions. The Engineering Division, Highway Division, the Facilities Maintenance Section, which is part of Highway, Parks Recreation Cemetery Division, Park and Golf Course Division, Sewer Division, and the Fleet Maintenance Section, part of Sewer as well. So, this is the organizational chart. As I mentioned, we have the Director, Assistant Director, and then going across the board, the Parks, Recreation, and Cemetery Superintendent, Ken. Highway as well. The Sewer Superintendent, Nick Schwartz. I am also the Town Engineer, and we have the Golf Course Staff under the Recreation Part. So, starting with Engineering, the staff is comprised of Mia, Town Engineer. We were lucky to have two engineers come on board recently. We have Greg that started six months ago and Emma that started about three months ago, and they've been a tremendous help. We're so lucky to have them. And we'll go over some of the highlights of the things that they've already accomplished, but I just, I couldn't be happier to have them working here. In addition to them, we have a heavy vehicle operator that's funded through stormwater that is primarily focused on the maintenance of the stormwater infrastructure. So, the Engineering Division, as well as Stormwater, which is under the Engineering Division, it's comprised of a little bit over $1.1 million, which includes $525,000 in roadway construction and $180,000 in drainage improvements. So, we are responsible for the design and construction oversight of the town's Transportation Improvements Program. Managing the Stormwater Management Program is acquired by EPA's Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, and that spells out MS4. People usually know it by the MS4 acronym, and that's a discharge permit. And as part of that, we have our land disturbance permit. We have oversight of roads, sidewalks, bridges, dams, the landfill, traffic signals, design reviews, and subdivision construction inspections. Our priorities are to provide a well-planned and cost-effective infrastructure, to promote public health, personal safety, transportation, economic growth, and environmental stewardship. So, one of the more anticipated projects in town is our roadway project. So, at this point, we had completed a roadway condition assessment this spring, which allowed us to review where we stand for each road in town. So, Greg Bodo and I, we drove each street in town and rated it zero to five, five being the best. And just want, just to check to see where we stand with those roads on our 20-year roadway improvement plan. With that information, we were able to compile a list of roads and neighborhoods. We typically try to lump neighborhoods together just so that it's a little bit less cost prohibitive and we get better pricing when we go out to bid. So, we didn't need to go out to bid this year because our previous contract with PJ Albert provided us with a clause, an option to extend, which we exercised this spring. So, we have our contract document signed, ready to go. A cost estimate was prepared to submit to Mass DOT for project approval, which we received on Friday. And so, subsequent to that, we're going to be providing a better notification to those residents that are abutting the roads that are going to be reconstructed, just so that they're aware plus to give them an idea of what to expect during construction. So, the list of roads that was, that's included this year is Jade Hill Road, Montclair Drive. It's a large subdivision with two sidewalks on both sides. So, that's going to be taking up a lot of, a large chunk of the money. But we're also going to be reconstructing both sidewalks because they are in need of repair. Rethel Street, it only has one sidewalk on one side, so we're going to be reconstructing that sidewalk. And then Byland Ave, Tinker Hill Road, and Maple Street, we're going to be replacing that in kind. We're going to be using, we're going to be pulverizing the roads there past the point of where we could do any other treatment. One of the other updates is Goddard Park, where the pedestrian bridge is currently under construction with an anticipated delivery date, mid-June to early July. So, subsequent to that, the other project components are walkways, site lighting, fountain repairs, and of course, the library addition. The site work, we did go out to bid for last year. Unfortunately, the bids did not come in favorable, and we needed to kind of switch gears and look at other ways to find, to get the work done using either town forces or current contracts. Another one of our projects is our annual pond nuisance vegetation control. So, we have issued a notice of conditional award to Solitude. We had a bid opening last year, I mean, last week. And that bid included Eddy Pond, Pondville Pond, Leesville Pond, and the Golf Course Irrigation Pond. As some of you may be aware, we had an issue with Eddy Pond as far as permitting is concerned. The way that the permitting has gone is that there was a endangered species. It was a, I believe, a butterfly that was found in the area. So, we needed to submit to the Mass Wildlife Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program, and we needed to perform a habitat assessment, which was provided to NHESP. But we're still in discussions with NHESP because now we're discussing flow calculations and whether those are required because of the distance from where we're treating and where that, where those species are located. So, that's ongoing. We're hoping to be able to treat Eddy Pond, but that's contingent on those discussions and how those go and how early we can come to an agreement. So, one of our biggest challenges or biggest requirements is our MS4 permit requirements. And those have a list of standards that we have to meet. And those are public education, public outreach, illicit discharge detection and elimination, IDDE, construction management, post-construction management, good housekeeping. And then we also have an impaired waters and total maximum daily load, TMDL requirement. So, some highlights of those standards. We had some public outreach to nine fifth-grade Swanson Road School students. We had our engineers present an enviro, an enviroscape project, and that highlighted it's a, it's a great hands-on demonstration where the kids can get involved, and it highlights where pollution can come from and how it spreads and how it affects our community and our waterways. So, it was a great opportunity where we were grateful for the schools to allow us to come in and present. So, I think that it was, I think it was very beneficial for both us and them. Our illicit discharge detection and elimination program, we have conducted a system vulnerability factor analysis to determine the outfalls that need wet weather sampling, and there's 13 total. So, Emma has created a digital mapping tool and forms to support wet and dry weather sampling work, as well as ordering the needed supplies for that work. The construction and post-construction management standard, that is primarily our land disturbance permit. So, in the last six months, we received 10 land disturbance permit applications, seven major permits, and three minor. We have a threshold where we don't want to be overly cumbersome to small developments, but we still want to make sure that we control that erosion and sedimentation. So, also in the last six months, we had conducted several site visits to eight different sites regarding land disturbance permits or were conducted without a permit. So, the site visits and subsequent correspondence to address them. The good housekeeping standard is more or less us making sure that we're doing our part in maintaining our infrastructure. So, we're responsible for 304 outfalls, 1,877 catch basins, 617 drain manholes, 30 town-owned BMPs, which include detention ponds and filtration basins, and proprietary separators, 230,000 feet of gravity drain pipe, 25,000 feet of open drains, and 13,000 feet of culverts. One of the annual requirements that we need to meet is the catch basin cleaning. So, basically, the requirement says that catch basins are, need to be cleaned and inspected to ensure no sump is more than 50% full, and that's spelt out in the permit. So, we had cleaned 1,400 catch basins since September 2023. We have a tracking system to make sure that we document that to see how much sediment was accumulated and how much was removed so that when we go back to those basins, we know how much has been added and to know whether or not we meet that 50% criteria so that we can focus our forces on those bases, basins that constantly accumulate sediment. One of the other annual requirements is street sweeping, but I will mention, I will address that in subsequent slides. So, one of the last standards is the total maximum daily load, a TMDL. So, communities that discharge stormwater to water bodies with a TMDL for total phosphorus are required to create a lake phosphorus control plan and reduce total phosphorus loads through structural and non-structural best management practices. So, the water bodies that are affected, there are many, are Auburn Pond, Eddy Pond, Leesville Pond, Pondville Pond, and Stillenville Pond. So, in that breakdown, you can see that by 2026, we need to reduce the amount of phosphorus going into our ponds or document the amount of reduction in phosphorus by 20%. And it goes up to 2033 where we need to make that reduction by 100%. So, we do have a draft phosphorus control plan that is, that has been completed. A baseline phosphorus load was calculated. The allowable phosphorus load was presented and stormwater phosphorus reduction requirement was calculated. So, by 2033, we're going to be, we're going to need to document that we are reducing total phosphorus load by 650 pounds per year. At this point, we're documenting that we're meeting the 20% mark, which is 2028 requirement because we can document that we're reducing it by 130 pounds per year. So, moving on to the Highway Division, we have Ken Fairbanks as the Highway Superintendent. We have Pat D'Agostino, our Administrative Assistant to the DPW. And Michelle Johnson is our Principal Clerk, who not only works with, in the Highway Division, but she supports Sewer and Golf Course and Fleet as well. Our Highway Division budget is a little over $1.7 million. And we perform roadway and bridge maintenance, roadway sweeping, brush cutting, landfill maintenance, drainage improvements, and of course, snow and ice operations. Our priority is to maintain a safe and a safe roadway network for motorists and pedestrians. I've included some pictures of some of the things that we are responsible for. Of course, the snowstorms. There's a picture of our leaf, of our salt pile. It is currently full, so it looks a lot better than this right now. And then we also have some highway employees doing some pavement preservation. And then we also have some highway employees doing some pavement preservation of full-depth patching and crack seal. So as I mentioned, one of the requirements from the MS4 is street sweeping. They need to be swept at least once annually. We typically go out there more than once a year. But every year, we have to go precinct by precinct, and we cover all the roads. Currently, we're in precinct five, and we're expecting to be done by the end of the week. And after that, we're going to be moving forward to precinct one, two, three, and four. We also operate a yard waste collection. For those residents that are not aware, but we opened for the year, for the season, on April 1st. We're located at 5 Milbury Street, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 1:00, Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 to 3:00. So to get a sticker, you just need to show up at the kiosk, and one of the attendants will help you. You just need a proof of residency. So we have a $25 annual fee, which is the fiscal year July 1st to June 30th. And we have a reduced fee for residents 60 and over at $20. We also have a $35 fee for contractors, but they are required to pay a $35 fee for each load that they bring in to the leaf pile. I think in the past, we have allowed out-of-town contractors to drop off as well, but we no longer can do that. So the part-time employees that work there, there's three of them. And again, they work seven days a week. So hopefully, residents can fit into their schedule to stop by and get rid of their leaf and brush. So the focus is to oversee and maintain the town's leaf and brush collection site. And the priority is to provide a professional service to the town of Auburn residents and businesses and to ensure that there is no illegal dumping occurring at the facility. Moving on to our facilities maintenance section. The staff is comprised of a facilities maintenance who, which the position is currently vacant. We lost, I think, probably most of us, no Jimmy, viewer guard. We lost them to better weather down south. So we have a vacancy that we're going to be putting a priority on trying to fill. We have a heavy equipment operator, who is also a skills craftsman, a full-time custodian that's designated to Town Hall, Library, Senior Center, Golf Course, and DPW. And a part-time custodian that takes care of the police station. And the budget is $87,388. And we perform carpentry work and maintenance on town-owned buildings, as well as janitorial duties on town-owned buildings. We prioritize providing a cost-effective and professional service to improve and maintain the conditions of existing facilities, as well as maintaining a clean and comfortable working environment for all town employees. So there's a multitude of projects that the facilities section worked on. This is just a little bit of a sample of past projects. So we have the leaf pile before and after, I mean, salt shed before and after picture that was done probably about eight years ago. They built a workshop right at the DPW so that they can do some of the projects and house their equipment. We have a picture of a bridge being built behind the Pappas complex at the hiking trail. It almost all started with the press box where they built the press box at the high school. They've been at the police station, the golf course, every building in town. So the Gleason Building, just a quick update. Currently, we have the HVAC installed. The only other thing that we are there waiting for is to just close up the walls so that they can just finish up their work. But the equipment is installed. We have electrical, rough electrical and rough plumbing that's already in. So we're at this point coordinating with the contractor that's doing the installation. And then we'll be able to do the drywall and finish work. Again, not really sure because of our facilities manager leaving. There might be some work that might need to be done by a contractor. But we're still evaluating that. So moving forward with the Parks, Recreation, and Cemetery Division. Again, Ken Fairbanks is the division superintendent. Kristin Pappas is Recreation and Culture Director. Pat Messina is the principal clerk for Parks and Cemetery. She is part-time, working at the accounting office the other half of the time. And we also have five Parks Division employees and two Cemetery Division employees. The budget for Parks is $338,506. Cemetery, $214,866,000. And Recreation, $31,024. We're looking to maintain the town's parks, ballfields, school grounds, and the Veterans Memorial Corridor. Maintain the grounds at all town-owned buildings, dams, and grassed islands. Provide recreation activities for the residents of the town of Auburn and to maintain the town's cemeteries and assist with burials. The priority is to provide a safe and aesthetically pleasing parks and public areas and to provide recreation activities to be enjoyed by both youth and adults. So just a couple more pictures of our Parks, Recreation, and Cemetery Division. We have the Veterans Memorial, our athletic fields, and our Independence Day celebration. So just a quick summary of what's coming up for townwide events. May 27th is the Memorial Day Parade in collaboration with the American Legion Turtle Post 279. The Independence Day Celebration is scheduled for June 28th with a rain date of June 29th. We collaborate with pretty much every department in town to make sure that is a success. Summer Concert Series is scheduled for every Thursday in the summer. Thank you, Kenny, again, and as well as the farmer's market that precedes the concert series. And I know that Kristin's been working hard on our online registration for our summer camp program, which is now open. There are other individual activities that residents can sign up for. So we welcome anybody to go online and check out everything that's being scheduled. Moving on to the Backyard Golf Course Division. We have, again, Pete Corio, the Golf Course Superintendent, Chris Hanlon, the Assistant Superintendent, Katie Ryan, Clubhouse Manager, Michelle Johnson, that's the principal clerk that's shared amongst a lot of the other divisions, and currently about nine part-time employees that fluctuates year to year. The budget is $558,208 for this year. And we're looking to operate, manage, and maintain Auburn's 54-acre, nine-hole golf course, continuously improve conditions of the course, and increase play and the overall golf experience. The priority is to improve the aesthetics of the course, update the irrigation system, improve drainage on the fairways, and provide a comfortable and inviting environment. So the town took over the golf course, the operation of the golf course in 2016. And Pete and Katie have made so many incredible improvements on the course, as well as in the clubhouse. So we couldn't be luckier to have them on board as well. But so some of the pictures show some subdrains that we were able to do in-house. But the bottom pictures show, highlight the additional drainage improvements that are needed. So as an update, we have a 2023 season summary. The golf course is a seasonal thing, so kind of separate from the FY, the fiscal year format. 36,590 total rounds of golf played, 105 season passes issued, and 14,447 golf cart rentals. We're looking at some future projects. We have the drainage improvements that we're looking to address. The drainage issues delayed the season opening. We have to close the golf course on several instances. When it rains, it just doesn't drain, so we can't let people out. It creates slow play. We went over the drainage improvements preliminary plan last week, and I could see firsthand the slow play where golfers were actually looking for their balls because it stuck in the wet areas. Those are roped off, but if a ball goes in there, it's kind of hard to find. And cart rentals are a big source of revenue. And unfortunately, we're limited to when we can send the cars out because of issues with drainage. So in addition to that, we need drainage improvements. We need to replace the 40-plus-year-old, I mean, irrigation system. I believe the useful life of an irrigation system is about 20 years. So we're due for an upgrade. So that would include a pump and electrical upgrades, as well as providing for sprinkler head efficiency and control. So we do have some preliminary design plans for both of those projects. And we do anticipate coming to town meeting in the fall for appropriation to move forward with those projects. We also have a maintenance building planned. Again, with the loss of our facilities manager, we still need to evaluate. There was some funding that was appropriated for that. But with the cost of materials going up and the loss of our facilities manager, we're going to need to reevaluate how we can move forward with that project. But it's needed for space for equipment and for space to repair the equipment as well. Moving on to the Sewer Division. Nick Schwartz is the Sewer Superintendent. Joanne Donahue is the principal clerk. And we have a staff of four sewer mechanics that are charged with the maintenance of the pump stations and the overall infrastructure. We have a budget of a little over $2.5 million, which includes $1,567,960 for the assessment to the Upper Blackstone Water Abatement District, now called Upper Blackstone Clean Water. We are looking to maintain and inspect the town's sewer infrastructure system and pump stations. And our priorities are to provide a continuous and well-maintained sewer system with uninterrupted service. Our goal is to avoid or prevent any issues with the sewer system. But if there are issues, we are hopeful that no resident or business is negatively affected by those while we're trying to control that. And we also are looking to maintain the system in an effort to minimize cost and minimize environmental impact. So as a summary of the system, our infrastructure is made up of 85 miles of gravity sewer pipe, 1,800 manholes, 12 pumping stations. And that all gets, that all goes into our Pen Rock Pump Station, which pumps directly to the Upper Blackstone Clean Water. And about 85% of the town is sewered. In FY '23, the town of Auburn transported $641 million gallons of wastewater to the Upper Blackstone Clean Water Facility, of which 21.5 million gallons came from Oxford. So typically, Oxford's flow accounts for 3% to 4% of the total flow to Upper Blackstone. Nick's been busy with a lot of improvements and a lot of projects that we've completed and that we're planning on. So in 2022, we had a year-one sewer system evaluation survey, which surveyed 10% of the town's gravity sewer. So based on our consultant's evaluation, we evaluated what was expected to be the worst 10% of the town's sewer. Those inspections included CCTV, manhole inspections, smoke testing, and heavy cleaning. And from that project, we also received some recommendations for future actions and remediation of those gravity sewer pipes. Our other big project is the Pen Rock Pump Station redundant force main project. So the concern was that the 20-inch duct line force main that connects Pen Rock to Upper Blackstone crosses over Route 20. And there would be absolutely no way that we could get enough trucks to haul that waste over to the Upper Blackstone in case of a failure. So the project was complete in 2024, and it runs parallel to the existing force main. And it's to be used in cases of emergency. So we're ready for the worst-case scenario. Our warm road pump station project, replacement project, is currently underway. It was awarded in 2023, but there were some significant contractor delays that pushed the construction to start this past month. So they were supposed to be substantially complete in February, and that is pushed over to August. As part of that, we had included an alternate for the project to provide for a walkway in front of the pump station to address some concerns for pedestrian access. That part of the bid was not favorable, so that wasn't awarded. But we do plan on addressing that in-house, as well as the subsequent trail along that road. And the project, aside from the walkway, is basically a complete replacement of the old pneumatic ejector station to a more modern, submersible-style pump station. It also includes the slip lining of the force main. So this is basically the same project that we had for, I believe, five pump stations. I think the project was finished in 2021. This is the last pump station that needs that upgrade. Um, another, uh, project that, um, that Nick's been working on, um, that, that we've really needed to, uh, to do, to accomplish is the SCADA system upgrade. Uh, so that is the replacement of updated and unreliable radio system with a new fourG cellular system. Um, it's cloud-based, real-time station monitoring and improved station analytics. Uh, so hopefully that will eliminate some of the, uh, the false calls that our employees needed to react to, um, as well as it gives us, um, more data as to what, what's going on in our pump stations. Um, then our other project that Nick was, that had worked on, um, we received a, um, a MASTEP gap energy grant to, um, uh, to provide for a VFD upgrade at the Holstrom Court and Sword Street Pump Stations, um, that, and that is expected to result in approximately, um, twenty-two thousand dollar savings annually in, um, in energy costs. Some other projects in sewer, um, is the Goddard Drive Sewer Linings. And that, that came from that recommendation from the, um, the, the evaluation. And that is in the, um, beginning of the design phase. Um, we also have, um, the Sword Street Force Main lining. Um, in the last, I want to say, twelve years, we've had three sewer force main breaks in, um, in approximately the same area of the, um, of the sewer force mains. So, uh, to address that, um, we have that project in the design phase as well. Um, and then we are going to move, be, be moving forward with further evaluations. Um, but we're trying to do, um, that work in-house. Um, so the, um, sewer division staff taking on that work and, um, um, being trained on CCTV, um, heavy cleaning and manhole inspections just so that, um, there's a cost savings, um, to the town and to the taxpayers. Our fleet maintenance section, um, we, I had mentioned the, um, the employees in, um, in previous, um, slides, but our budget for that, um, has been revised to about four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Um, and the goal is to maintain and repair all vehicles and equipment owned by the town's DPW Police Fire, Finance and Development and Inspection Services Division. Um, and the priority is to provide a safe, professional, and cost-effective skillset to maintain the town's rolling stock. Uh, so just as a summary, um, we have, the, the fleet is, that we serve is comprised of approximately fifty, uh, veh- vehicles or heavy equipment at the DPW. Um, we also have some, um, light equipment that's being maintained, um, that may not be on the road, but, um, is, is still, is still maintained by the, uh, the Fleet Maintenance Unit. Um, we have vehicles from the town hall, uh, thirty-five vehicles approximately, uh, from the police and approximately twenty vehicles, um, from the fire department, including ambulance and fire apparatus. Um, the battery constraints are, um, rising costs and aging fleet have seen motor vehicle repair costs rise to, um, about double since twenty twenty-one. Um, we've, we've been to finance and we've, we've, um, we have had to amend our, our budget many times as a result of that. Uh, so we are keeping repairs in-house to the largest extent, extent possible, uh, to significantly lower those expenses. Um, and we also continue to focus on preventative maintenance, training of our mechanics, and vehicle lifecycle cost analysis. Um, and as part of that, um, we have implemented, um, a, um, a, um, asset management software, FLEDO, and, uh, that tracks our worker order requests, vehicle tracking, um, vehicle history tracking, and, um, it provides us with an improved vehicle lifecycle cost analysis. So, um, that's been in use for about a year. Um, so right now we're compiling that data that's going into, um, the software so that we have some, some real, you know, real numbers to go for, um, moving forward. Um, so that concludes my presentation. Um, and I'm open to any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Joanna. Thank you to you and your team for the, um, good work they do for Department of Public Works. Are there questions for any board members?
Yeah, phosphorus. What creates it and how do we prevent it?
Um, so phosphorus is, um, naturally occurring. Um, what, what, so the, the problem with it is that, you know, if it goes into the ground, then it can get filtered through the, the, um, the soils. And it's not a problem. The, the biggest problem is the, um, is the, um, impervious areas. So that was part of the calculation, looking at the, the land use of those, um, of the areas throughout town, the impervious areas. Um, so the, um, the, the, the easiest way to treat phosphorus is to, um, is to have infiltration. So green infrastructure, actually, I don't think I have that. Um, let me just. So, um, there's green infrastructure possibilities, um, that if, if we can infiltrate that into the ground, that's definitely, you know, um, the, the biggest impact. Um, we, you know, we can try to remove our disconnect impervious areas so that they're not, you know, directly discharging into our waterways. Um, and then we also have BMPs, um, such as sweet sweeping, street sweeping, um, and, and like.
So I'm just, is, uh, more needed in the planning aspect for impervious areas? So we're not adding to the problem or is this more of, we have to fix our existing issues and prevent that from running off? And again, if it's naturally occurring, but we have to get rid of it.
Right, right.
I mean, I don't want to add to it, so I.
So it is, it is an impaired wa- so it's because we have an impaired, impaired water bodies. So, um, or, or we have a limit to the amount of phosphorus that can be introduced into the water body. Um, but we, as part of those, the, um, land disturbance permit, we now require, um, any development to provide phosphorus reduction and calculations as part of that, um, as part of our permit.
And I had a question on the roadway, uh, roadway reconstruction. So I know, um, several of the streets you listed as no sidewalks, so they're not prevented. Are, are they in the plan or were they identified as streets that should get them? And, you know, I know there's been a lot of work on that, so I just, uh, the, the three streets.
Sure.
We're not planning to ever add them? They're not in that plan?
So those were not identified in the sidewalk prioritization plan? Um, so at this point, um, we're just looking to, um, you know, to upgrade the street to, you know, to, to make it passable for, for residents and, and, um, and our, um, and, and vehicles. But at this time, it would be a much heavier lift to, um, to have, it would be a, a separate project, um, when we have, uh, an existing roadway that we're, we're just, um, doing maintenance on or, or, you know, whether it's milling or pulverizing the road, um, to upgrade that road to, you know, to a, a better level of service. Um, we can just, we will go by the existing limits of the roadway. Um, if we were looking to add on a project to, to add a sidewalk, then it would be a separate design project where we would need to have a survey done, looking at the right, the limits of the right way. And then any additional grading that would be required as part of that. So because this is more of a maintenance of our roadways, we weren't able to, you know, we wouldn't be adding that, um, in addition to, you know, at this time it wasn't prioritized as one of the roads that, um, that we would need to address.
You also mentioned, um, the extended contract. Um, were there escalators in the rate or did we get a favorable rate because we extended an existing?
So we, so the prices are the same, but there's always, uh, um, a, an escalator in the contract, um, as per MASTDOT requirements. So, um, it's the fuel price adjustment. So if the fuel prices either go up or down five, more than five percent, then either we have to pay more for certain quantities that either, um, that are, that are outlined in the, the MASTDOT specs. Um, so we either have to pay more for, whether it's concrete or hot mixer, um, or any other, um, of those line items. Or, um, in the past, we've also, um, received a discount. So we took credit for the, um, the lowered cost of fuel.
Pretty, pretty safe to say that with that extension, we're actually saving money rather than going out to bid again?
I would hope so. I mean, we, you know, um, we always look at the, you know, the, um, the state's prices and see what, you know, what other chapter ninety projects, um, go for. And we've, you know, our prices are usually favorable.
I, I just have two questions. One is about the stormwater management. Um, I know those are all federal mandates that have been pushed out to, um, communities over the last ten, maybe ten-plus years. Is there any federal money that we get to cover some of those costs? Or are there grants that we can apply for, that we have applied for? I know it's, it's an expensive, you know, process.
So, um, for individual towns, there really isn't much out there that I've seen. Um, we, um, as part of a grant, uh, Auburn is part of the Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition. So, um, we always have a seat at the, um, at the steering committee. Um, Auburn's always had a, held a seat there. Um, and because that's a regional entity, we have received grants, um, whether it's for, uh, public education or outreach, um, that type of thing. But, um, the individual municipal improvements are, I, I really haven't seen much or any.
I get you. Thank you. My other question is about Packagock Golf Course. I know that, um, the golf course sees a lot of revenue from cart rental. But when the course is too wet, people can still golf, but the carts can't go on it. Has, um, any thought been put into making, putting some cart paths in?
Um, we actually, we are going to be moving forward with a, um, a master plan for the golf course. Um, that, and that will be addressed in that because, you're right, you know, um, there's a lot of golfers that don't even want to golf if they're, if the carts aren't out. So not only are we losing the revenue from the golf cart rentals, but we also are losing customers. So, um, we are definitely looking to address that.
When is that master plan being, um, worked on?
Um, we're at this point looking at the, um, at the procurement for it. So we're compiling the procurement and then looking to award that work to one of the consultants.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so I apologize. I'm gonna be long-winded. So one of the, you know, one of the things, given my professional background, is that I just want to thank you and your staff. Uh, to me, DPW is the young son of heroes of any municipality. Um, you are, uh, just as much as police and fire, first responders. You know, you are there providing support to fire and police when there's emergencies, when storms come, you're the first to get called. When trees fall down, you're the first to get called. When there's issues of playgrounds, parks, schools. It's always DPW that gets called, um, to, to fix the issue. And I just wanted to thank you for that. Um, you know, just in terms of your, your various divisions, um, you know, I'm not a golfer. I learned a long time ago I don't have the patience. Uh, but I have a lot of friends who are golfers and they sing praises of the golf course, uh, not just Auburn residents, but coming from other municipalities too. So kudos, uh, to you and your staff. Um, with respect to the sewer work, you know, yourself and Nick are, you know, I want to thank you for being proactive, not waiting for, uh, all hell to happen before you start fixing the system. I am being proactive and, and really addressing the, the weaknesses in the system now before they happen. Um, that's very important. Kristin Pappas, um, I'm a big fan of all your programs. I want to thank you for working with this board to provide that funding, uh, with the ARPA money and being able to pass it on, uh, through the online portal, uh, to families in need to make sure that our programs are all accessible, uh, regardless of someone's income or circumstance. Um, your programs are great. Um, and then, you know, to me, the man that wears way too many hats, Superintendent Fairbanks. Um, you know, luckily the farmer's almanac got this one wrong. They, uh, predicted one of the worst winters, uh, of, of our time, uh, that was supposed to take place. And I know that regardless of what municipality or even the state level, finding contractors, regardless of how much everybody was offering, was impossible this year. Um, however, we did have some, some, some storms, some ice storms and everything. And, uh, yourself and your staff were out there right away, um, really second, you know, second to none in the Commonwealth in my book. Um, you guys had those roadways cleared, uh, school, uh, was able to take place. Uh, we were able to get out of our driveways safely. And I live up on Packagock Hill, uh, with one of the sharpest, uh, steepest driveways on Auburn, on, on Hampton Street. Um, and, you know, my driveway was a mess, but the minute I got to the roads, it was great. Uh, so thank you for all the work, um, that, that you did. I do have a couple of questions. Again, because I live and breathe this stuff, it's kind of a double-edged sword. So, um, the, the couple of questions that I do have, um, and I know I sent, uh, some in advance and thank you for putting, uh, the information in here. Um, this is similar to the finance department. There's a lot of great information that I'd love to see on the website, um, so it's easily accessible and, and tells a great story of what DPW is doing, uh, on a daily basis for the municipality. Um, with respect to, um, one of the things that's not here is sidewalks. Um, so when I got elected, I, I kind of really bothered Ed. And luckily the board, uh, agreed, uh, to, in town meeting as well, to, to find money to set aside for, uh, sidewalk construction, separate of the roadway construction, to ensure that, um, our, our longstanding Complete Treats policy can start to be implemented and we can start to build, um, the sidewalks. And I was hoping to see some sidewalk projects on here, separate of the roadways. Specifically, um, I know that we've had residents several times, uh, come before the board and testify in public comment. And then also, um, fill my inbox in either email or they also find me via private messenger on Facebook, uh, to tell me about Bryn Mawr. Um, so we did a lot of great work on Bryn Mawr recently, uh, last construction season. Brand-new, beautiful sidewalk, uh, constructed the roadway linked up with an existing sidewalk. Get to the bridge. Uh, thank you for working with MASTDOT and making sure that they made those repairs to the bridge. Um, and then it drops off. And right, I believe it's Warren Street is right around the corner with a sidewalk and there's that missing gap. And I think that we were hoping that, um, this construction season, we would see that gap sort of filled in. I understand there's work going on, um, at the, at the pump station. But perhaps after that, um, if we can see, um, some of those sort of sidewalk-related construction projects take place.
No, uh, we definitely want to make that, that passable. Um, you know, so that, that was primarily the delay to try to get, you know, want to make sure that we're, because the project was already delayed, we want to get in the way of the contractor and, and, you know, provide any, you know, any additional delayed, uh, uh, any additional delays. So, um, we are, like I mentioned, we're looking at doing the work in-house in front of the, um, the, um, the pump station as well as that trail, um, alongside of, of, um, Bryn Mawr and, uh, and Warren Road. Um, we are going to be like, going in front of Concom to, uh, to do that work. Um, and like I said, we're looking at that, that trail so that we have some sort of, like, more of an escape or, you know, a safe place for, for people to, to go on. Um, a sidewalk, a constructed sidewalk would be, uh, you know, a more long-term plan for, you know, a consultant to go, you know, come on board and, and do the, uh, the survey, the drainage and, um, and whatever takings that we will need from the abutting, um, landowners.
So, I mean, just, you know, with. So, I mean, just, you know, with respect to, uh, even constructing a trail, uh, I just want to make sure that it's ADA compliant, um, you know, meets full accessibility. Any time, any new construction we have to do has to be ADA compliant now, has to be pro-aid compliant. Um, and it's not just for those with limited mobility and wheelchairs, um, walkers, et cetera. But also I know in that neighborhood, there's some moms with some strollers, uh, and it's just, you know, an easier walk for them if they, if the, if the surface is, uh,
Right. So, yeah, we definitely want to make that, um, safe for everybody.
Thank you. Um, the other, um, just some questions I had with respect to the roadway, um, program. Um, I was happy to see that the crack sealing and the, the permanent patching, uh, the full-depth permanent patching. But I was wondering if you had looked into, or if you have, over the next couple of years, you plan to look into doing more pavement preservation programs, um, outside of that? So a lot of municipalities are using, uh, chip seals, bonding wearing course, micro surfacing, um, and what studies and, and my own experience has shown that, uh, for every $1 you spend on pavement preservation, which basically extends the life of the existing pavement, you save $3 in the long run, um, with construction. So I, I think that especially in a town that, that is, is, uh, budget conscious and, and understands, you know, the, um, the, the importance of, uh, saving, pinching pennies and, and saving those, uh, dollars. I, I just wanted to know if you had intention in the future to go that. It seems like the, the current, this, uh, policy is sort of an older methodology of wait until the road drops off, fix the last first, uh, worst condition. Then at that point, you know, you're doing exactly what you have here. You have six roads, uh, they're probably, their PCI is probably less than 10, and you're doing a full depth.
So, so but for this year, we do have full-depth reclamation. Um, in the past, we've done millon overlay, which, um, uh, extends the life of, of the road for, you know, good 10, possibly 15 years.
15, yeah.
Um, I have been watching some of the other pavement, um, um, pavement programs in other towns. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm still watching. Um, I've seen, I've seen them, um, being implemented and I've also seen them fail. So I'm a little wary about certain, certain ones. And I'd like to allow those towns to kind of be the, the guinea pigs. Um, when it comes to, you know, the, the type of micro surfacing or the really thin overlays, um, being in New England, the plows just rip them up. So, um, the problem that I've seen is that they get ripped up and now you're not only dealing with a pothole, but you're not able to fix it because it's too thin of a layer to fix. And I know that some towns, um, you know, they've had contractors come back and, and try to remedy that, but I want to see how things go before, before implementing it here.
Sure enough.
But I, I am definitely.
Yeah. I, I would urge you, I don't know what town you're looking at. I can certainly put you in contact with some that have been doing it for 10-plus years, uh, with heavy traffic volumes.
Yeah.
And I think it's, it's a mixture of your, the spec you're using and the contractors you have, uh, which is true for everything.
Right.
Um, so, so I'm, keep watching it. Um, but I, I promise you every single year, I'm going to keep asking that question.
Absolutely.
Um, the, the other, uh, thing that I, I mentioned as well is just the website updating to get the information on the website. Um, when I went on the website just to, you know, in advance of this meeting, um, the roadway, uh, list was, um, I think it said fiscal year 2022. It was 2023.
Mm-hmm.
Fiscal year 21 said 22, um, you know, and, and so it's great that we have this information, but I'd like to push it out to the residents as well.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure town meeting next week, some town meeting members in this room are going to have the same exact question, what roads are you doing? When are you doing mine? Um, but, um, you know, those types of issues. And the last question I just have for you is, um, a big focus. Uh, I got stopped again walking my dogs, uh, on Hampton Street, um, is on speed and safety. Um, and I know that, uh, you know, there's three E's. There's education, engineering, and enforcement. We rely, in my opinion, very heavily on the enforcement. Um, and I think we need to start doing the other two. We started doing the education with the radar, uh, feedback, display boards in prime areas. Um, obviously around the schools, Packetchog, um, uh, which has been great. But, you know, as we're looking at the streets and the, um, construction of the roadways, um, we cannot afford to have a police officer on every street 24/7. I wish we could, um, but we can't.
Oh, no.
So it really, um, we need to, you know, engineer our streets to get, be safer, especially when we're not building sidewalks. That means that those streets are not just for, you know, cars, they're shared spaces. You're going to see cyclists there, you're going to see kids on scooters, you're going to see us walking our dogs, um, that type of thing. And, and I think that that's something, again, over the next year or two, um, I'd like DPW to, to take a look at, um, whether, you know, they are complete streets programs, traffic calming programs, seasonal traffic calming programs, where they come out in the winter and they go in in the spring, and they're there for the spring, summer, and fall when you have a lot of activity on the road. And then in the winter, they come back out so they don't get in the way of plows, um, those types of improvements. Um, and not just in our core jury square area, but really in the, in the neighborhoods where we're seeing people walk, um, and interact with cars in fortunately rather dangerous ways.
Sure. Um, no, we'll, we'll continue to evaluate the roads and, you know, um, we're lucky to have a wonderful police department that, you know, that, that work, works with us. And, you know, um, we, we do get, uh, speeding complaints and, and they go right out there to do the speeding studies and, and everything else. So, um, I appreciate all their support. Um, but we will be looking at, you know, what we can do to, to address those issues.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have comments, questions? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Joanne.
I'm just going to ask that Karen and Joanna work with John and Mike to have this information posted on our website for the benefit of our residents to see as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, so moving along, we have no communications. Number six, we are moving to seven, be the notification made to the town relative to the Mass Housing application for Perry Place, the 40B project. I know there's quite a few people in the room. Um, if you would like to be heard on this, I urge you to sign up for public comment. Um, I will be having a special, I know, a special public comment right after this discussion so that you can be addressed, um, right away, um, or make your comments known right away. Um, so there's the letter in our packet. Ed, do you have any?
Sure. Madam Chair, I wanted to get this to the board as soon as possible. Uh, we were notified, uh, by letter on April 25th by Mass Housing that an application has been received, uh, for a site plan, uh, for a site approval, uh, for 16 Perry LLC, who is the applicant. Um, that applicant is known to this board, uh, is Venakasa. Um, and so there's a, a review period and a notification, a requirement to the town as a result of this application. So they are seeking comment up and through May 28th. Um, they're seeking some, um, um, input from the town or any other board and committee, committee members that would, uh, like to, um, comment as well. Uh, there is a site visit, uh, by Mass Housing, um, that is scheduled for May 7th at 11:00 AM. And I would urge any board member who would like to attend to please let me know so I could let, um, I could let, uh, Mass Housing know because they want to know in advance. But more importantly, it all depends on the number of participants that are willing to, to walk the site. We may be required to post that as, as an open meeting if, um, more than, uh, three members plan on attending. So, um, if you could let me know, that would be great. Um, we do have the, um, concerns that the board addressed through the, um, the draft development agreement that we were looking to get executed. Um, that did not happen. So those items are noted. I will forward those to Mass Housing. If there are any other items that were not part of that draft agreement, uh, please let me know so we can, um, um, provide some additional information. Uh, we will also notify, ask Adam to notify the ZBA of the application as well because ultimately, uh, this matter is going to go before them. But I just wanted to get that information out there, uh, that they are going the unfriendly route by submitting this application to Mass Housing.
Board members have questions?
Yeah, I do. If you don't mind. Um, so a, a couple of things. One, I mean, they make reference to the 15,000 for qualified third-party consultants when you go through the ZBA. I just want to make sure we do, in fact, take advantage of that. I know that we, you know, from my time on the planning board, we do use peer-reviewed consultants, but, uh, we might as well make the state pay for it, at least up to $15,000 if we can. Um, so I just want to red flag that. Um, I just want to know, um, so it's no surprise that, at least not to me, uh, that once they notified us that they were going unfriendly, that we were expecting this letter. Um, I'm surprised they took this long, quite frankly. Um, but, um, you know, I, I know that when we were notified that they were decided to go unfriendly, myself, um, and other members of the board, um, had expressed that we know that Mass Housing will provide this opportunity for us to weigh in as a town, um, with a list of all concerns we have. Um, and so I just want to make sure that, um, that there's a, we have a mechanism for a letter to be prepared by staff, um, our professional staff from all the various departments, um, that reviews every single concern we have with this project. Um, whether we think it can be mitigated or not, I don't, it shouldn't matter. If, if it's a concern, it should be listed, uh, it should be documented, it should be, um, you know, why we think it's a concern, to provide some background information as well. Um, in that way, you know, and, and to make sure we get it, you know, I, I think it's probably best that it's prepared by our professional staff, but sent by the board. Um, that, um, so that's probably going to have to be a scheduling on how you get that before us, um, so that we can ensure that we vote to endorse the letter, uh, and then, uh, have our chair sign it on behalf of the town. Um, but also I want to make sure that, you know, the expectation that we set is that we're going to provide every issue we have with this. Um, however, my own experience is that Mass Housing is likely going to move it forward anyways. But what they will do is they will tell the developer, the town has these concerns, we expect you to work with them to alleviate these legitimate concerns through the ZBA process. Um, so that, you know, if we don't do that, this just becomes a rubber stamp. Um, and they'll move to ZBA and they'll do what they're going to do. But if we at least notify Mass Housing of every single concern we have, um, you know, I, I don't care if there's a salamander there, you know, list it. Uh, if the road's too narrow, we know that, uh, fire apparatus, um, you know, safety on the roadway despite what their traffic engineer says, uh, with respect to the volume, um, that's going to be traveling on that roadway. And we know there's no cross, and we know, you know, there's cross, no crosswalks, there's no sidewalks, um, et cetera. Um, I just want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to, um, to ensure that the town, um, comes out in the best possible way at the end of this process.
So through the chair, if I may, uh, just follow up. Um, I've already been in contact with Adam and I will, um, I will meet with him tomorrow and suggest that there's some outreach to our boards and committees in terms of getting that information, uh, collected, uh, so we can present it to you at a meeting. Um, I don't know, as the meeting dates line up, you're scheduled to meet on the 13th. Um, I don't know if we will have that prepared in time for the 13th, but I may suggest that we have a special meeting on the following Monday to address this item specifically, given the fact that the deadline to submit any comments is May 28th. That doesn't give us, uh, much of an opportunity to, uh, bring it before the board and, and make some, some adjustments after your review. So, um, I'm just going to throw that out there, that, that would be probably the, the, the plan on, um, getting it back to you.
Yeah. I mean, for, for myself, extra meetings, that's fine with me. Um, you know, and, and not just those boards and commissions, you know, what really, you know, helps from Mass Housing is hearing from the police chief, the fire chief, your planning, your building commissioner, uh, et cetera, your, your stormwater experts, your, um, you know, your wastewater experts, your, your water source, Auburn, huh, huh, you know, Auburn Water, uh, et cetera.
Uh, have we received any sort of timeframe? At what point would, uh, Mass Housing, uh, make a ruling on this project?
So I know from date of application, I know the clock starts ticking. I don't know, I, I don't know if it's 90 days, 120 days, I'm not quite certain, but there, there is, there is a, a time element to that. Um, and that's why they're very specific about when these comments are due, because it's part of their review. Uh, I'll try to get that information, um, on, um, the process, on, on how long from date of application to when they have to make a decision by. So I'll try to get that information to you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
Um, so I, I guess my comment, and again, I'm not sure what the form is. I know we've had discussions to be ready for this. So, um, hopefully it can be prepared by the next meeting. Um, that's two weeks. Um, if it takes longer, then we'll deal with that. But I think we have documented quite a bit. I think it's the letters from those department heads that will, will help it. Um, again, I don't know if there's a place on the form. We were in negotiations. Um, it was our understanding they were going to move forward with it and then backed out. I don't know what their reasons were for backing out, but the fact that they were at least in negotiations with us on many of those items tells me that they would still be willing to help mitigate that. So if we list every item, I think that helps if it does move forward, that we can help mitigate a lot of that through the developer, not through the taxpayers themselves. Um, so, again, I'm not sure what that, that looks like in there, but we, we certainly spent a lot of time and effort, um, and in good faith with them, and they decided not to sign it. So, um, I'd like to make sure that's noted somehow if possible.
Um, I agree with the members of this board. Um, I am going to open this up to public comment. Um, you are limited to three minutes, so I'm going to start with Tim Daly.
I'll rest in peace.
Okay. Just want to come up with the name and your address.
Um, Tim Daly, Rockland Road, 25 Rockland Road. You know, I, I came and spoke at the last meeting, which is what, September? And I do believe in, in affordable housing, but not at Perry Place. It's not a, that's not the right place for, for housing. The roads are terrible in that whole area. The neighborhood is, is, is busy now without traffic. Getting onto, getting onto Rockland Road, get, uh, and then going up to Auburn Street, you can't get out today. You have trouble with the traffic on Auburn Street. So I can't imagine adding 2,000 or 3,000 cars to, to that neighborhood. I, I just, I, I don't understand that this is what's going to happen. I've noticed that people in the neighborhood are selling their houses to get out before this happens. That is not good for the neighborhood. People have lived in the neighborhood for 30, 40, 50 years and they're, you know, they, they like the life that they live in that neighborhood and now this is changing their life. So I think that's a big concern for all of us. The main road, the main road that, that's going to ruin is Pearl, Perry, um, Highland, because people, we know how people are. They're going to try to find shortcuts. It's going to be a couple of days coming down Perry, then they're not going to like that. So they're going to come down Pearl and then up Highland and then on to Weathered to get onto Auburn Street. Or they're going to go the other way, up the hill onto Rockland Road, down to Boyce and go that way. I just think it's a lot of cars for the neighborhood. It does, this doesn't fit that neighborhood. And like I said, I'm very for affordable housing, but not in a swamp, not in a wetland, not in an area like that. I do have one question and then I'll be quiet. Um, Perry Place is a public road.
No.
I mean, it's a private road. Sorry. Thank you. Um, my question is, and I've had answers and I think I know it, but private, you own half the road. Private, you own half the road. So if there's two houses across the street from each other and that's their land, what right does he have? I know you have to let them drive across it. You can't stop people from riding on the road, but you can stop them. It's your land. So why would we allow them to widen the road, to do something to one side of the road, to put in all kinds of, all kinds of traffic plans? It's, it's their property. I mean, I wouldn't want someone coming through my backyard. And it's kind of the same thing. So I just would like to verify that that is true and, I don't know, what can we do about it? Because th- those people do have a right. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Do you have, can we look into that or do you have?
That's something we'd have to look into. I think there was some language in the D- I think there was some language in the deed that allowed for rite of passage, as I recall, but I would have to take a look at that.
Okay. No, I understand. So the next on the list is Dick. I'm having a hard time reading your last name.
Chandler.
Chandler. Okay. Mr. Largess?
Good evening, Board. Danny Largess, 39 Perry Place. First of all, have to give credit where credit is due. I believe Mr. Corain did some fan negotiating with this builder, but unfortunately, he thinks he can rule the world. I've been following this builder from the town of Berlin, Shoesbury, Millbury, there's nothing but insult experts. The Providence Worcester Railroad was at the ZBA meeting, two meetings ago, and he turned around and asked this gentleman, what makes you an expert? He had tried to argue with the gentleman about a car would win against an 800 pound, 800,000 pound train. And he told him, he says, look, there's no way a car is going to even come out close to looking what it's going to look like. I've taken, taken upon myself, I spoke with the governor, I spoke with the housing, we had a meeting, Senator Mike Moore, Representative Paul Frost, we were all in a meeting. And to, I believe I spoke to Mr. Kastenovich. There is an informational seminar at Holy Cross College next month. They highly recommend as many board members from the ZBA and the select board to attend the meeting. I'm not sure of the date, I forgot what the, the housing said. I will be looking into it and I will be attending that meeting as well. In the last month or so, we now have bevisitive moved in, so Conservation, Mass Environmental, I think, should be in on this. And we also have documentation of a spotted salamander, which is on the endangered species list. And this has all occurred since the last meeting. Like I said, I've been following this builder from town to town and he just plays these people like fiddles. The town of Berlin shut them down and he wasn't even allowed to change a light bulb because he likes to mess with the conservation or he'll, he'll do something just for the boards to let them back in and then he clams right up and goes right back to his antics. And as far as, I was informed by someone the other day, and I'm trying to get my hands on it, he actually, in the town of Shoesbury, took a backhoe and went out and ripped up a beaver dam. And I'm trying to get my hands on the video. So I just wanted to let you folks know what you're up against. The letter that we have to submit to the state, I dot the i's, cross the t's and make sure the periods are in because it's, this guy's a snake in the grass. He really is. So I don't think there's, there's much else I can say, but I think those boards, ZBA, Conservation and Mass Fish, I talked to the senator tonight and he said, get in touch with Mass Fish and Wildlife regarding this matter. He said, this is big stuff. I said, okay, thank you, sir. So I just wanted to make you folks aware of where I've been going in my travels over the last six months, eight months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Dockry?
Paul Dockry, 32 Perry Place. I bought the land next door, it was 16. So my concerns are, like Tim said, it's a private road. We all own half of it. There's actually a private sewer main that goes up that road, which a couple of the residents own. I was told when we put the sewer main in, nobody could tie into that. So now he's talking about going around it. He said he can go around it, he's got enough frontage to go up by it, parallel with it. Also, when I looked into buying that property, they were told, I came here and they told me that there's two separate lots to that, that parcel. One is buildable, the other one is locked. It cannot be built. And now all of a sudden, it's combined. Nobody came, did meetings on this to combine them or anything, they were supposed to do meetings on that. But years ago, that was part of 290, when they split 290 and they separated it and they said it's a gridlock now, you can't use it, non-buildable. I even have the letter that they sent me for that. I think I paid a hundred bucks for it too. So those were some of my concerns. And also the sidewalks. I'm sure a few people have been down there. You're talking safety on sidewalks, you want to see sidewalks, you're talking 2,000 cars a day with that amount of housing. That's just 2,000 a day, not to mention the delivery people, the family members. So, and now you've got people walking up and down that street with 2,000 cars a day. Somebody's going to get hit. Yeah, trash trucks, everybody else, you know? And then, you know, so those are my, some of my concerns. The biggest thing is, I understand he's got the right to develop his property, all fun and games, you know, that's great. But what gives him the right to uproot the whole neighborhood, to rip up our road? It's a private road, we all own it. I understand you got a right of way to get to it, but what gives you the right, you know? He's saying he's going to bring water, sewer, electrical down there. We have all of that. It's not doing us any favors, you know? But it is a private main that runs down the middle of that road. So that's something else to write down. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You were saying something about, there's something in the deeds. I went to a lawyer downtown. In the deed, it has to, I forgot the exact wordage, but the Irish Perry Realty Company who owned the road, when they did the deeds, they did not say that they wanted the road. They dismissed it and sent it to the people who own the houses. And I've already looked into that, bless you. I already looked into that and I will get you the exact numbers and on the, that it should have been on the deeds that would have given him the right to do this. But it does state that the residents own the road. And it's, it is not in the deed that gives him the right to do that. It has to be in the, in the deed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chandler, would you?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you so much. So we will look into the, a possible special meeting to make sure all of the concerns are met or in the letter to Mass Housing. I don't know that we had, so let me look at my calendar real quick. So our next meeting is the 13th, so we would probably be looking at the 20th if we're unable to bring it forth on the 13th.
Is that going to be coming through to get that letter wrote to the state?
It's due by the 28th? So that gives us?
For the chair, I assume postmarked.
We'll get the details on that, okay?
Okay. Maybe we could fax it or something.
How long will it take for the state to review and get that to the town?
They have not indicated.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Can I just add one question?
Certainly.
To the public, the town people, if we have completed our mission, and I was told to Mass that we can send a letter, can we forward that to you without the plan? And if you forward it to them as part of the package?
I, so I think they were seeking input from boarding committee members.
So is it board only?
Now, anyone. So, so anyone can submit to, their letter specifically calls for boarding committee members to us because we're the official town body, but anyone can submit testimony for that quote unquote hearing that they have, which is written in, you know, if there are residents that have concerns, I strongly recommend not just bringing them to us, but sending them to Mass Housing as well. Unfortunately, with respect to the legal issues in terms of the private property and ownership, I know this has been discussed previously, that is really, the town's not a party to that. We don't own any of that land, or, you know, we don't own a part of that parcel. It's really going to, you know, that's going to be, if it goes to court, going to be battled between their attorneys and attorneys hired by the other landowners.
Thank you. So we're moving along to number eight, which is the town manager items. It's a request for ARPA allocation.
Madam Chair, members of the board, when I put this item on, our elevator here at Town Hall was not operating. We do have it up and running and we got a 90-day certification to continue to operate. I was hoping to have some additional data in terms of cost. There are some additional failures that we have to act on within that 90-day period. So I'm asking at this point, I was, I was told that the total cost to repair the elevator was upwards of $25,000 to $50,000. The most recent update I got this morning was $8,000 to $10,000, and I don't know if that included the repair of the circuitry that allowed us to get that operating back running again. So I'd like to hold this item till the 13th so I have some concrete information that I can bring in relative to the additional repairs that need to be made to that, to that elevator. That elevator was critical to Town Hall operations on a daily basis. And as we all know, we had a moving event because we couldn't get some individuals that had some mobility issues, we couldn't get them up here to the second floor. So it's important that, that elevator is rehabbed and is in a good operating condition.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions?
We need a motion to hold it or?
That would be great.
Let's make a, you want to make it? Let's make a motion to hold item number 8A, request the board vote for allocation of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds for upgrading repairs to Town Hall elevator to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. So we have number nine, there are no table items. Number 10, there are no member items. I'm willing to open up for public comment if there's anybody else in the room that wishes to make a public comment. Seeing none, we will move on. We don't have any minutes to approve, we would just need a motion for an adjournment.
Need that motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well, we are adjourned.